And good after evening, afternoon. February 1st. The meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the chair, and we will start our meeting with a roll call of the members that are currently present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array. Mr. Ray, I see you there.
Yeah.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German. Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlo. Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
And the retired Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Wonderful. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Thank you. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the January 25th email, you received draft minutes of the January 18th meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the draft minutes? Are there any corrections? If not, may entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 102-23 zoning regulations, off-street parking requirements, for the purpose of amending the required number of off-street parking spaces for certain types of commercial and service uses and generally relating to parking. And Bill 103-23 temporary storage units in residential zones, for the purpose of amending the definition of temporary storage unit and generally relating to temporary storage units and general safety provisions. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Mr. Yes.
Chair, if I may? Just, thank you. Just again to fill in the board for a moment about the master plan. Master Plan Resolution was introduced on January 16th. Work session was held this past Tuesday. The board, excuse me, the council has decided they want to hold over to another work session that'll take place on the 13th of February. They raised a number of questions about the maps around the various place types and have actually proposed changes to the maps. Although they're not changing or have not yet proposed changes to any of the criteria that were used to create the maps. So we've now, Jen Meacham has now reached out to them offering to walk at least their staff through some of the processes so they better understand hopefully the nature of the maps and the complexity of the data that was utilized. There were just a few questions about some of the visions that had been raised. And both Councilman Patoka and Councilman Marks have submitted some written proposed changes to the text of the plan itself that I've reviewed and talked, I've talked to both of them about their changes. So none of them are very dramatic, I don't think. Some reemphasis of some points that each of these council members want to make for the plan. So we'll probably get a better sense over the next couple of weeks as to whether they want to see any further changes made as well. So that's, just wanted to bring you up to date on where we've been with the plan and the discussions with the council.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. I appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Lafferty at this point?
Does that plan come back to us or they just ratify it and it is what it is at that point?
Yeah, great, great question, Todd. No, they, once it passes on to them, it becomes theirs and they will either modify, amend, approve, or they could reject the master plan. Historically, they made some modifications primarily to the text. And then they pass, they vote on it and adopt it as the plan for the county. So it does not come back to the planning board.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Not hearing any?
No, a quick question. Is the council also dealing with this next week at all?
It's on the, it was initially on the agenda to be voted on this coming Monday. I believe what they have to do though is simply make a motion to defer it until a later date. And so they would vote on and out on February 20th.
All right, good, right, because I think I saw some people commenting being voted on next week.
Yes, no, it's, that is going to be postponed.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Lafferty? Not hearing any? This is the conclusion of our agenda. We will reconvene for a public hearing on the basic service maps at 4:30. Stay tuned on this WebX here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, folks, back in about eight minutes. Right now, and good evening again and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing on Basic Service Maps. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, I'm the chair, and we will start our meeting with a roll call of our members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlo. Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. This evening, we have a public hearing on the basic service maps. The item was first introduced to the board on January 18th, 2024, with a presentation from Mr. Justin Hall from the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Tonight, the staff of the department are here to further present the maps to the board. Following the presentation, the board members will have a chance to ask questions and then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on this matter. Please join me in welcoming the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Good to see you all at the table.
Evening. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. We have a PowerPoint that we're gonna show tonight. And let me do that. Bear with me one second. Let me know. If you can, can you see my PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
I apologize if it's.
We can see it.
You can see it? Okay.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Good afternoon. My name is Justin Hall and I am the Chief of Design for DPWNT. I am joined by fellow engineers Amy Bly in Sewer Design Section and Chris Nebrey in Traffic Engineering to present on the Basic Services Maps. We are here to present a more detailed account of the 2024 Draft Basic Services Maps for the Public Water, Sewer, and Transportation Systems. The Basic Services Maps are defined by County Zoning Regulations Article 4A Growth Management, Section 4AO2 Basic Services Maps. As mentioned during the last board meeting, deficiencies are defined for each basic service as followed. A deficiency in the water system is determined by a failing fire flow test that measures the residual water pressure at the nearest public fire hydrant. A deficiency in the public sewer system is determined by a lack of capacity to convey existing sewage flows. And a deficiency in the transportation system is determined by lack of capacity to provide a standard level of service within arterial and arterial collector intersections. Level of service designations of E and F are considered to be deficient. Also, areas of special concern relating to the public sewer system are areas tributary to known constructed overflow points that are being addressed by the consent decree. And here's our list of presenters for tonight. I will discuss the Basic Service Map for Water. And as shown on the previous screen, Ms. Bly will discuss the sewer map and Mr. Nebrey will discuss the transportation map. For the 2024 Basic Services Map for Water, there are no deficient areas. This means that all fire flow tests meet or exceeded the required water pressure. Fire flow testing standards are determined by the National Board of Fire Underwriters. They require a pressure of 20 PSI for effective firefighting. The city of Baltimore is the owner of the public water system and performs hydrant tests on a nine-year cycle. There are 14,536 hydrants in the county and 8,883 hydrants in the city. It should be noted that they only test these hydrants during the summertime due to weather and hence you get your nine-year period to test all these hydrants. Now, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Bly for a discussion on the 2024 Basic Services Map for Sewer.
Thank you, Justin. So I'll provide a brief summary of why these areas of special interest and deficient, the single deficient area are included in the 2024 Basic Services Map. What we've been doing to address those and what we have planned to do in the near future to enable us to remove these areas from the maps. The Richland Manor wastewater treatment plant in Perry Hall, this area is identified as a deficient area. During heavy rain, the amount of wastewater that is treated at the plant significantly increases and the wastewater flow exceeds 80% of the treatment plant's reserve capacity. In accordance with MDE guidelines, the treatment plant is considered as deficient during those heavy rains. This is, that is why the area of Perry Hall is identified as a deficient area on the Sewer 2024 Basic Services Map. We have completed one rehabilitation project due to the flow to reduce the flow to the plant during heavy rain events. We are in the permitting stage of another rehabilitation project in the same area. We are also working on design of a pump station that will replace the treatment plant. These improvements, once completed, will allow this deficient area to be removed from the map. Herring Run Parkville, this area is identified as an area of special concern. There are two sanitary sewer overflow structures, number 41 and number 129 in this area. During heavy rain, the amount of sewage in the collection system temporarily overwhelms the sewer system, resulting in overflows of sewage into Herring Run. We have completed a significant amount of rehabilitation of the sewer system in the Parkville area to try and reduce the infiltration and inflow that enters the sewer system during heavy rain. We have eliminated illegal connections into the sewer system. We are constructing a relief sewer that is approximately 90% complete to help reduce possibility of the sewer system becoming temporarily overwhelmed during heavy rain events. We have also recently completed a relief sewer in this area which will help to reduce possibility of basement backups in this area. These improvements, once completed, will reduce the possibility of overflows, enabling us to remove this area of special concern from the map. Arnett Road in Pikesville, this area is identified as an area of special concern. There is one sanitary sewer overflow structure, number 113, in this area. During heavy rain, the amount of sewage in the collection system temporarily overwhelms the sewer system, resulting in overflows of sewage into a tributary of the Johns Falls. We have completed a significant amount of rehabilitation of the sewer system in the area to try and reduce the inflow and infiltration that enters the sewer system during heavy rain events. We have eliminated illegal connections into the sewer system. The next stage, Baltimore City must construct a relief sewer to add capacity to their sewer system prior to us eliminating the overflow structure. We have been communicating with the city on a regular basis to get updates on their efforts and their status to complete their studies and analysis required by the city's consent decree. Studies and analysis must be completed before they can construct the necessary improvements. Once the city has completed their improvements, we can remove this area of special concern from the map. Brooklynville area, this area is also identified as an area of special concern. During heavy rain, the amount of sewage in the collection system temporarily overwhelms the sewer system, resulting in surcharging of the existing sewer system. Johns Hopkins Healthcare and Surgery Center Development and also the developer of the Greenspring Manor subdivision were required to construct relief sewers to eliminate the surcharging during heavy rain. These improvements, once completed, will increase the capacity of the sewer system and reduce the possibility of surcharging, enabling us to remove this area of special concern from the map. Powder Mill area, this area is identified as an area of special concern. There are four sanitary sewer overflow structures, number 22, number 23A, 23B, and 24 in this area. During moderate to heavy rain, the amount of sewage in the collection system temporarily overwhelms the sewer system, resulting in surcharging and overflows into Powder Mill. We have completed a significant amount of rehabilitation of the sewer system and also the Powder Mill Interceptor to try and reduce the inflow and infiltration that enters the sewer system during heavy rain. We have eliminated illegal connections into the sewer system. We have constructed a portion of the relief sewers needed to reduce and eliminate the surcharging and overflows. llenation of the additional relief sewers will reduce the possibility of sewer system becoming temporarily overwhelmed during heavy rain events. Phase 2 Powder Mill Interceptor Relief Sewer is now under construction and approximately 75% complete. An additional relief sewer, Phase 3 of the Powder Mill, is being designed. These improvements, once complete, will reduce the possibility of overflows, enabling us to remove this area of special concern from the map.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but can I ask one question? Did you, do you have any examples of these products, of these projects that are going on?
When you say examples of the projects, those are the projects that I've mentioned are the projects.
Oh, I understand, but I mean, in the slideshow, there's no examples.
No, we just set up our slideshows we've done in the past where we have each section listed and then we're breaking it down with descriptions in our, in our.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
May I ask a similar question? Can you put maps up to show us where these are located?
Yeah. We're looking at that, thinking of that right now. I'm sharing. Must stop sharing and see if we can't get that map up. Want, can you go on Amy, let up?
Sure.
Because I think something was there before. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen again. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Or do you still see the? You see the map?
Yes, we can.
Perfect.
Cane'sville area.
Before you get to Cane'sville, excuse me, I'm sorry. Before you get to Cane'sville, could you go back up to the last one to show the board as well where Powder Mill is? Thank you.
If everyone's ready, I'll move on to Cane'sville.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Cane'sville area, this area is identified as an area of special concern. There are three sanitary sewer overflow structures, number 116, 117, and 118 in this area. During moderate to heavy rain, the amount of sewage in the collection system temporarily overwhelms the sewer system, resulting in overflows into a storm drain. We have completed a significant amount of rehabilitation of the sewer system in this area to try and reduce the inflow and infiltration that enters the sewer system during heavy rain. We have eliminated illegal connections in the sewer system and Baltimore City must construct a relief sewer to add capacity to their system prior to us eliminating the overflow structures. We have been communicating with the city on a regular basis and are, to get updates from the city on their efforts to complete their studies and analysis required by the city's consent decree. Studies and analysis must be completed before they can construct the necessary improvements. Once the city has completed their improvements, we can remove this area from the special concern as a special concern from the map. With that, I will turn it over to Chris for his presentation on the transportation map.
Before you move off this, a couple of questions. If, once you've addressed all of these different areas of special concern that you've gone on, will there be any areas left or will that pretty much take care of what you've currently identified throughout the county?
That will address every area that we've identified throughout the county. So as you can see on our map, we've highlighted there's only the single deficient area of in Richland Manor. And then the remaining are those areas of special concern.
And then, just to clarify, when you talk about eliminating illegal connections, what exactly does that mean? I mean, is that someone's sewer is hooked up illegally or stormwater? And how is that?
Example, the most common example would be somebody has a sump pump in their basement and those are connected to the sewer system, which is not legal. That's the main illegal connection that we see. And downstream connections, the other.
It's not, it's not sewer water that's being dumped in. It's other, it's rainwater, thus the storm issues.
Exactly, yeah, it's water that should be discharged to the storm system.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, continue your presentation and then we'll have questions from the board.
All right, good evening, members of the board. I'm Chris Nebrey, Division Chief Traffic Engineering. So we're presenting the 2024 Basic Service Map for Transportation, which is our Basic Services Map that we evaluate intersections throughout the county for its capacity. Every year, we count the DE and F intersections from the previous year to reevaluate their level of service and also A, B, and C intersections rated in a three-year cycle. We count the DE and F intersections to ensure that we are looking at their condition during the school year. Upon evaluating these intersections, they are assigned a traffic shed if they are levels D, E, and F. These traffic sheds are areas that of congestion that will control development where level of service D does not have a moratorium, but it's just getting close to it. Level of service E has some capacity left over, but that will be dependent on the traffic generated by the development. And level of service F is areas where there is a moratorium of development. I want to present to you one change we had in the level, in the Basic Service Map at the intersection of York and Richly, which was previously an F per county council bill, but we are presenting it as a level service C as it was evaluated by our data collection. And that concludes my presentation.
So I guess I'll kind of wrap it up then. That is our presentation on the Water, Sewer, and Transportation Basic Services Map. And if there's any questions, we'll go ahead and stop sharing, but if you need me to pull something back up, I'm glad to, just let me know.
Thank you so much. Board members, do you have any questions at this time?
Nancy.
Mr. Halepka?
A question about the transportation. Have you guys been finding any impact sort of post-COVID and, you know, people not driving into work as much? Has that been impacting any of the transportation sheds?
We have not found that, but we. And it was like closer to the, when we got out of COVID. It was, we saw some traffic changes, but no changes into the map.
Nancy? Yes. Ms. German?
I'm wondering if, if we could see, since we couldn't see the, the maps at the beginning of the presentation, the, the map for the sewer in the Perry Hall area, which I think you all said was inadequate. I'm wondering if that could be put back up? And my question is.
Do you have a map for that?
Yep, I'm getting it up right as we speak. Let me know if you can see it.
Yeah, we can, Mr. Hall. Thank you.
So, okay.
It's always helpful for us to see maps.
I would strongly agree with that, Nancy.
The brown area there is the identified area.
Okay, so Mike, and this may, this may be a really dumb question. The fact that there are two new schools in the northeast area and another one about to open in the fall, how, how does that? It would seem to me that that would have an impact somewhere on sewer capacity. Can you just talk about that a little bit, just for my own clarification?
Sure, so absolutely, when we design our pump stations, we look at any additional build-out for the area. So as we said, this is currently a treatment plant that's in operation and we are in the process of building a pump station. and we are in the process of building a pump station. So that has been factored into the ultimate capacity of the pump station.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions at this time before we ask the public? Not hearing any, thank you. We will now call upon those of you that are.
Nancy, Nancy, I'm sorry, I had my hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
That's okay. Um, two questions. What is a, um, sewer relief point?
Is a sanitary sewer overflow structure, um, that, that was common practice to be created, in fact, to be constructed, um, prior to, I think it was the Clean Water Act. Yeah, please.
So for the, luckily historically, when there would be problems in the system, this is long before Clean Water Act in nineteen eighty, whatever, ever, utilities, if someone complained a lot, they would go install a pipe that ran from the sewer system to the no, locus closest stream or storm drain. Obviously, that's a no-go now, so we are eliminating those from the system. So instead of building the, adding capacity or fixing the problems, the easy solution was to just dump sewage. But that's obviously stopped long ago as far as instantly installing those type of relief structures.
So we're just eliminating pre-existing relief structures.
Okay, but there's, they still exist.
Yes, some of them do still exist.
Do you have a count on that?
Ten.
Ten, okay, then you probably said that. And, um, the other thing was, um, the, you say the fire hydrant test for water supply is near, you say it's the nearest one, what's it nearest to?
The nearest, um, uh, so it's a nine-year cycle these hydrants rotate on that they get tested? So they can't test them all one, so, one year because what I, what I was trying to say with the seasons, like this time of year, we don't test hydrants because it would, could turn into like ice break out there.
Absolutely.
So they basically get the summertime as a testing period. So they cycle through testing all the hydrants, but just over a nine-year period. So.
I, I understand that, but you said that it was, it was the nearest, physically nearest, and I'm just curious about what it's nearest to.
Measures the water pressure at the nearest hydrant. Is that what you're talking about? So the water pressure they measure for, uh, efficiency in the system.
So if they're looking at a community, say like, let's just pick, um, Fox Chapel, they'll find the nearest hydrant and that will tell you what the water pressure is in the Fox Chapel commi, community. Does that make sense?
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Not hearing any? We'll now call upon, uh, those of you that registered with Ms. Bensley to speak on this topic. Speakers will be called in the order you registered. Speakers, please remember to limit your comments to two minutes or less. Please provide your name, the organization that you represent, if applicable. We'll now begin with.
Thanks, thanks Nancy, sorry. Uh, first up, we have Larry Fogelson. Um, Larry, you are unmuted and I will go ahead and share. Um, he had some materials he wanted shared. Okay, can you guys see both the visual and the timer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. Uh, Larry, you can take it away.
Um, yeah, thank you. Larry Fogelson, uh, speaking on behalf of the Greentown Alliance. Um, well, that, that graphic raises a question I wasn't able to find an answer to. Uh, definitions of deficient and special concern were not something I found in the statute or anywhere else. I'm sure they must exist somewhere. Uh, but moving on to my statement, um, last year, the Baltimore County Council amended the twenty-three Basic Sewer Service Map to show an area of deficiency south of West Chappa Road near Greenspring Station. It is our understanding that the council changed this area to a deficient area as opposed to an area of special concern. Because there are eight sewer segments that according to DPW's own assessment are overcapacity. According to the county, the overcapacities range from ninety-four percent to a hundred and one percent. It is also our understanding that DPW during its review of a plan for the proposed development of sixty-two homes, uh, I think that's called Greenspring Manor, immediately upstream of the deficient area, stated that the consequence of failure to prove these pipes is a sanitary sewer overflow that, and that zero is the number of units that can be built at that location without causing an overflow. To our knowledge, these pipes have not been improved and therefore this area should continue to be designated as an area of deficiency in the twenty-four Basic Services Maps. Even if these pipe, pipe segments are replaced with larger pipes, as being required there are numerous pipe segments downstream from there all the way to Lake Roland that have capacities above ninety-four percent. And therefore, by the county's admission, require replacement as well. We know these segments have capacities over ninety-four percent before, because the county's own consultant made these determinations in a report. Based on these undisputed facts, we ask the area previously designated as deficient south of West Chappa must remain a deficient area because the pipe segments in that area have not been replaced.
Thank you, Mr. Fogelson.
Capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Fogelson.
Next up, uh, we have Ms. Renee Hamidi and she has, um, a visual as well, so I will go ahead and share that. And then Renee, I'll start your timer.
Thank you.
Okay, Renee, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Good afternoon. I'm Renee Hamidi, representing Valley's Planning Council. I also live in the Jones Falls Sewer Shed. I don't believe the basic services sewer map that you're being asked to approve reflects the actual conditions of the sewer system. The two thousand five consent decree requires the county to do a performance assessment of the sewer system. That was done in two thousand twenty-one by a company called RJN. It found that there would be numerous sewer overflows and capacity problems in the Jones Falls Sewer Shed and prepared a map showing these problem areas. Uh, in the middle of this map, you'll see some red circles. That's the area where the current basic services map shows the sewers are deficient. Red on the map means there are predicted capacity problems for the smallest storms. As you travel downstream, you see more red all the way down to Lake Roland, which is where the orange lines intersect. Orange means there will be capacity problems and overflows for the second smallest storm event. In two thousand twenty-two, another consultant hired by the county prepared a plan for a project to repair all the sewer segments in and near Lake Roland, three point seven miles in total and forty-three manholes. In the triennial review that you saw late last year, ten million dollars was allocated for this project. Yet the basic services map doesn't show any problem areas around Lake Roland. Why would the county spend ten million dollars if there are no problems? So the deficient area from last year's map should stay deficient on this year's map and the area all the way down to Lake Roland should also be deficient based on the findings of the county's own consultants. The basic services map is supposed to help regulate development. If the map's not correct, the county risks allowing development where sewers are already at or over capacity. I sent in questions about the proposed map and the account, accompanying memo from DPWT that I think this board and county council should be asking DPWT. It's critical that the board get answers to those basic questions before making any recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamidi. This is a, is there any other speakers?
No, there are not.
Thank you. This is conclusion of our speaker registration list. Thank you to everyone that came to speak. The planning board will take your comments into consideration. Are there any further questions or comments from our board?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask the, the questions that I think I've asked every year. In terms of overall water capacity, overall sewer capacity, how does the, the county stand? I mean, are we getting close to full capacity on both that we have adequate growth? I mean, I know that there's different areas where there may be issues, but just sort of an overall assessment.
Overall, we're in good condition, I would say. There's always, uh, the process as we look at development, we look at every development case by case. It's hard to say like every sewer is fine because you don't know what's proposed to connect to. So that's why we go through, I'm sorry?
Uh, no, I understand that. I guess I'm just thinking, you know, to the extent that everything flows to only a, a, of, a couple of, um, sewage treatment centers, et cetera. Do we have sufficient capacity there? The water supply sort of has sufficient capacity? That, I guess, had more just a real overview of the, the system.
Yeah, broadly speaking, we're in good condition. We, um, the treatment plants we do, we work with the city every year. There's, uh, they have to submit a a, a report to the state about the health of the plants and the available capacity. So you have, always have to stay under that eighty percent capacity, otherwise there's an issue and we are under that number. So we're good. The water system's in good health. I know we had some low reservoirs for a while, but they have recovered fully during this wet December, January we've had. Um, they've covered the, uh, facilities down in the city so that they're no longer exposed to the air. You know that we had that health issue uh, about what, six months ago? So to, to, to address those issues, so we're doing, we're, I think we're doing good.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other further questions or comments? Not hearing any? This concludes our public hearing. As a reminder, this item is scheduled for a vote at the next board meeting on February fifteenth. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Done.
All in favor?
Bye.
Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, speakers.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.